First regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee. And at this time, I would like us to rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, um. So the first, I'm gonna, oh my God, Brooke, you were supposed to start.
I know.
That's a control freak. Okay, Brooke, I'll shut up. You go.
Thank you. So first of all, we want to welcome everyone and we've got three new members. Oh, that are on, so we want to welcome Amy, Sharon, and Rich. And we're just delighted to have you join us tonight. So thank you so much. This is our first meeting after an election, so this is, this becomes our organizational meeting. And so at this point in time, which is why the superintendent opens a meeting and calls for nominations for the chairperson. And once the chairperson is selected, then the chairperson assumes control. So I'm open to take nominations.
I would like to nominate Mrs. Catherine Codian to be chairperson of the Neshoba Regional School Committee.
Second?
Thank you, Kathy. We have a second. Do you accept the nomination?
What if I don't? What happens? Are there other interested parties besides Brett?
I'll call on other parties.
It defaults to Todd.
No, I would be honored to accept the nomination. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then let me call and see if there are any further nominations for chairman of the school committee.
Oh, Mike, are you nominating?
I would like to nominate Leah Viverito.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that? Elaine, did you just second it?
It wasn't me, but I did hear someone seconded.
Who seconded? Okay, thank you.
So I would not like to accept as much as I appreciate Mike's confidence.
Okay.
And Kathy's secret. No.
No, Leah, I was prepared to pay you a significant amount of money for this nomination. And I throw the election.
I am still being tutored. Thank you.
So Leah does not accept at this point in time. Are there any other nominations?
Move the nominations be closed.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Brett. Okay, then we'll take a vote even though there is only one nomination on the floor. We'll take a vote. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
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 Does it not have to be a roll call vote?
Now that you say that, because we are on Zoom, you're absolutely right. It does have to be roll call. So Amy, we'll start with you.
Aye.
Mike?
Yes, of course.
Thanks, Steve.
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Sharon?
Sharon's not on.
Oh, sorry.
Sharon?
The microphone is.
Sharon?
Sharon's not, Sharon's not on. That's the auditor.
Oh, that's the auditor. Oh.
Thank you. Steve?
Okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
Rich? Okay, thank you, and Rich?
Aye.
Great, thank you. So Kathy, you're in unanimously.
Well, thank you.
Glad to be here with you.
Well, I appreciate the confidence. And the only reason that I am comfortable accepting is because of all the support I get from everyone on this committee. So thank you, and I'll be in touch to delegate as much work as I can because I believe in sharing power or work mostly.
I have a question. Why do we, why do we keep seeing a photograph of Nikki on?
Well, Nikki, Nikki is, this is our person who are the individual who oversees the taping of this. And so that's why.
Oh, is that why she's on it? Okay.
That's correct. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so at this time, I will entertain nominations for the position of vice chair of the school committee. Would anyone like to make a nomination? Leah?
I'd like to nominate Elaine Sanfilippo.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
So I'm going to give that one to Mike Horace. Okay, Elaine, do you accept the nomination?
I do accept, but I would also gladly concede if there was anybody else interested that was looking to take on the role.
Are there any other nominations?
I move that nominations be closed.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of Elaine Sanfilippo as vice chair, I will call the roll. My vote is yes. Amy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Brett? Collins?
Yes.
Uh-oh, okay, good. And Rich?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So now, the next position we seek to fill is that of secretary. Now, oh, Alita?
Seconded that.
I beg your pardon?
Who seconded that?
Who seconded?
Mike did.
Of course.
So just for the sake of clarification, Alita is the secretary when we have our regular meetings. When we go into executive session, we need to have a secretary from among the, the school committee because it, these are closed sessions. Now that being said, we have two executive sessions tonight. And our past secretary, Steve Rubenstein, has graciously offered to do the minutes tonight because it would be too much to expect, I think, someone to just jump in cold. So with that in mind, I'd like to entertain nominations for the position. Leah?
I'd like to nominate Steve Rubenstein.
Steve, you have to speak up.
No, thank you. I appreciate it, but no, thank you.
Okay, so Steve respectfully declines. Any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Leah Viverito.
Leah?
Turnaround fair play.
Oh, ma.
I will accept.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I'll call the vote. Kathy Codian, yes. Amy?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Um, Mike?
Aye.
Brett? Did, Brett, did you say yes? Uh-oh, we, we're losing Brett. Uh-oh. Okay, we're gonna work.
That's them up, yeah.
Mary?
Yes.
And Joseph?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and Rich?
Aye.
Oh, yes. Okay, so Leah, thank you. Um, and we will, you don't have to start tonight. And Alita will give you the, whatever training is necessary. And luckily, we don't have a lot of executive sessions. So it, it just might be the title that you can revel in and not the actual job work. Okay, um, just before we get into the, the rest of the agenda, I'm wondering if, Alita, do you have a Sharon's number, phone number? All right, I'm gonna send it to you. If you could call and check on her, please. What should I do with that? Right, I have it.
She just emailed me that she lost the link, so I'm about to resend it to her.
Okay, very good. Okay, so if there is no, without objection, if there are no objections, I would like to change the order of some of the things on the agenda. So the first thing that we will do is have the audit presentation. And then we will hear citizens' comments. Third, we will have our discussion on promoting equity and acceptance. Fourth, we will hear the Treasury, Treasury report for May. And five, we will do the district reopening. And then we will go to the chair updates and the rest is, is in the appropriate sequence. So. Uh, so with that being said, Pat, would you introduce the auditor and let us know what we should expect?
Yes, I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have with us Cheryl Stevens Burke from the audit firm of Melanson &amp; Heath. And she's going to give you a summary and answer any of your questions about the fiscal year 19 audit. And I'll turn it over to you, Cheryl.
Well, thank you, Pat. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for inviting me to your meeting this evening. Much different than in past years, but we're getting used to doing these meetings. I did want to thank Pat and her staff also for their assistance during the audit. It went very smoothly and we do appreciate all of the, the assistance that we are provided during the audit. So I did want to talk about some of the highlights of, of the audit. First, wanted to talk about the financial statements. Typically, I flip through in my presentations, the, the report itself. But kind of adapting to these virtual meetings, I've just been doing it a little bit differently unless you want me to go through the, the actual report. So just let me know what your preference is.
Does anyone on the committee have a preference in terms of the format?
No. Okay, well, great. I'm just going to, to talk about some of the highlights about the financial statements, some of the things that as a school committee you really need to know. And some of the things that would be kind of considered to be indicators of, of the school district's financial position and, and some other things. So to start, I just wanted to note that the independent auditor's report, which is the first couple of pages in the report, it's what you hire us for, is to provide an opinion on your financial statements. And the opinion is a clean or unmodified audit opinion. It says that we believe your financial statements are materially fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So if this opinion was anything other than an unmodified opinion, there may be reason for concern. So other things that I just wanted to point out about the audit and the financial statements is that our independent auditor's report is dated at the end of March of 2020, which is consistent with about, probably the last three or so of independent auditor's reports. The timing of the audit is very consistent and it's within the timeframe that is allowed by the state. And that's, and that's very important to note, especially with COVID. That has slowed some of audit processes down. And, you know, there were some delays in issuing some of the reports. So that's a good indicator that you made it by the deadline, regardless of the pandemic. Other things to point out, so key indicators. Everyone knows that fund, unassigned fund balance or your E and D number is a very key factor in determining the financial position of the district. And at the end of fiscal year 2019, your, your unassigned fund balance was about 3.9% of your expenditure budget, which is within the 5% limit that's allowed by the state of Massachusetts. And that figure actually improved over the last year. So that's a very positive indicator. Other things that are important to note when reading your audited financial statements, if you have any fund balance deficits, and primarily in the past, where you see those is in your grant, your grant funds. Because those grants are funded on a reimbursement basis. And basically, you expend the monies before you receive the revenue back. And that creates at any point in time a def, what looks like a deficit. But that is part of our audit. We do look at those very carefully to make sure that they're not like a revolving fund that has some issues, you know, some operating deficits and things like that. So most of those are a result of timing differences in receiving the money on those reimbursement based grants. Other things to look at, when you look at the income statement, your fund balance in the general fund went up overall by about $116,000. And there's also a budget versus actual page in the financial statements that shows a comparison of your general fund, final budget, to the actual figures on the budgetary basis of accounting. And that shows that positive results as well. So you received more money than you budgeted and you also spent less than you appropriated. So both contributing to that positive result. Other things to note, no management letter again for fiscal 2019. Over the last three years that we have been your audit firm, a lot of improvements have been made. If you recall, in the first year, there, there were quite a bit. But, so that's very important to note that you have no management letter. That management letter, if there was one, would report if you had any significant deficiencies or internal controls, in, in internal controls or material weaknesses in internal controls. So that's a very, very positive indicator. With respect to what is called the government wide portion of the financial statements, that's the first couple of pages when you look, when you start to look at the numbers pages of the financial statements, that's the page that includes all of those unfunded liabilities and things that a lot of the bond reading agencies look at. That is still an ugly looking page. And it's because you've implemented a couple of GASPys in recent years. GASPys 68 related to the unfunded net pension liability. And GASPys 75, the unfunded liability related to other post-employment benefits, OPEB. So that still looks a little ugly, but you're not alone. Almost every governmental entity that participates in a retirement system or offers post-employment benefits to their employees is in a similar situation. So that is something that is, is important to note. Other, other deliverables that were part of our audit engagement include the single audit report, which is a report on your federally funded programs. This year, we looked at the IDEA program and there were no findings on that. And the findings that were noted in 2018 related to IDEA were all resolved during 2019. So that's a huge improvement over the prior year. There is one, what they call an other matters finding, that does still remain in the report because you didn't implement or approve your uniform guidance policies until April of 2020. But now that they are in place, that finding will go away. So, and we also have a report on your end of year report that we've issued and is soon to become final. There's two findings in there and they can be resolved with an amendment to your end of year report. So as soon as that is done, you should be good to go on. So that's really a summary of, of the audit. Did you have any questions that I could answer?
Alia?
This is not for the auditor, but Alita, I think that Rich is in the waiting room because he had a technical difficulty.
I just texted Alita about Joseph as well. He got, he can't get back in. So any, any questions about the audit report? Mary?
So through, through Pat, I did get an answer to this, but I still wanted to bring this, bring this up. This is page 25 under three, cash and short-term investments and custodial credit risks deposits. And the last sentence reads, "The district does not have a deposit policy" custodial credit risk. And then the first sentence of the next paragraph says, "As of June 30th, 2019, $341,777 of the district's bank, bank balance was exposed to custodial credit risk as uninsured or uncollateralized." So that, you know, $3,441,777 is the OPEB planned fiduciary net, which we obviously wish were more, but at least that's there. And so the answer that I got to this, I mean, I was just a little wondering. That would seem that we wouldn't, that, that's money that we're happy that's there. We wish there were more, but when I read that it was exposed to custodial credit risk as uninsured or uncollateralized, I did ask about that. And since it's in the report, but the answer was that that's okay. But I just wanted to bring it up with the whole committee. And, and maybe Ms. Burke would, would like to comment on that or that most districts, I mean, the money seems fine where it is, or Pat would like to?
Pat, I do recall you forwarding this question to me. And this, this question relates to a very specific disclosure requirement that came about in the late 80s and early 90s because of all the savings and loans failures that occurred when people had money in those that wasn't covered by FDIC insurance and so forth. And so that's why there's a requirement now for that to be disclosed in the financial statements. However, it's really not unusual to have holdings that are not insured or collateralized. You know, best practice would be just to make sure that you have your holdings in a stable financial institution and at least your treasurer's taking a look at that on a pretty regular basis. When you look about, look at the dollar amount of holdings that you have that are not covered, it's relatively small. But certainly, something to think about maybe is to implement a policy. Some school districts do have, do have a deposit, a deposit policy that they, that they follow.
Mary, does that address your question? You have follow up?
It does.
Okay.
I guess the only thing would be, do you recommend that we would have such, you know, such a bank holding that would be insured and collateralized?
You know, again, it's not necessary to have it all insured and collateralized. It does cost money if you have holdings in excess of the insured amounts or federally insured amounts. I think what I would recommend is maybe considering a policy that would be considered to be a best practice. Maybe look on the GFoa website, the Government Finance Officers Association. They, they have lots of good templates for policies. And then maybe as part of the policy, having kind of a formal look at it, maybe quarterly or something like that, just to take a look at your holdings and make sure that you don't have too much that's uninsured or in an institution that might not be considered to be a stable institution.
Thank you.
Other questions? Brooke?
I just wanted to make a quick comment to Melanson &amp; Heath. We thank you so much. You guys have been amazing to work with over the last couple of years. And to Pat, when, when I look back four years ago and I look at tonight, how far have, have you come in that, that office? I'm just really, really proud of the fact that the findings are what they are. And, you know, the, you know, the acknowledgement tonight of the number of changes that have been made in the last couple of years with regards to dealing with the fiscal component of the school district. And I'm just, I really am appreciative of the hard work, Pat, that you and your office do. And Melanson &amp; Heath, we thank you for your good guidance. Because lest we forget, you know, when we did the, the deep dive a couple of years ago, that really laid the foundation for us. So I feel we're in a fiscally very sound place right now, and that's a good feeling. So thank you to Melanson &amp; Heath and Pat, thank you to you and your office.
And I want to just echo what Brooke has just said. I think really to appreciate what we're hearing from this report, we'd have to go back about four years and look at that report. Because it wasn't good. But, and again, Pat, with your team and your expertise and skill, turned it around and there were recommendations that were just embraced immediately. And the next year, it was, it was so much better. So Pat, thank you for your leadership and for, you know, keeping an eye on the, the dollars and cents and, and also keeping us informed and helping us understand the, the work that you do and the importance of what you do. Any other questions? Okay, I did make a note, and perhaps this is something that the policy subcommittee may want to explore, to go to the GFoa website and look at ideas for policies and whether we want to pursue one for that account that, that Mary mentioned. Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you. And, oh, anybody else? Okay. Oh, Elaine?
I'm sorry, we just have to move to officially accept it.
Oh, thank you. See, you should be the chair because I forget this stuff. Okay, can I have a motion to officially accept the audit report?
I will move to accept the audit for the year ending June 30th, 2019 as presented.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, I'll call the vote. Kathy, yes. Amy? Amy?
Yeah.
She's muted.
Okay, Mike?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
And Elaine?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Rich?
Aye.
And Joseph?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So it is accepted. And thank you to Melanson &amp; Heath again for being such a good partner with us and helping us understand the ins and outs of our, our finances. So, okay, thank you. Have a good night. Be safe. So before we get into citizens' comments, I do want to formally introduce the new members and welcome them and just ask them to just say a little bit about yourself, your town, why you want to be on the school committee. And so I'll start with Amy Cohen from Bolton.
Bolton.
Yes.
Yes, hi, I'm Amy Cohen. Moved to Bolton four years ago. We were attracted to the town because of the reputation of the school district, the beautiful town to live in. Family, and I'm very excited to be joining the school committee and contributing to the important decisions that they make at each meeting. I think I mentioned I have four kids. One is in the high school now and three are in Sawyer. And they span all of the age ranges, so I'm in the thick of it. And I think I have my finger on the pulse and I'm, I'm excited to be here.
We're excited to have you. Thank you. Sharon?
I'm Sharon Park. I am from Lancaster. I have three children. My oldest is a 2019 graduate from Neshoba. My son is a senior at Neshoba and my youngest daughter is entering eighth grade at Luther Burbank. I have been so, I have, the best way I can describe it is my family has been so blessed to be part of Neshoba from the get-go, from the time my oldest entered kindergarten and here in Lancaster at Mary Rowlandson. And all the way through, we have just been blessed again and again and again. I have been on the Mary Rowlandson School Council and on Luther Burbank School Council. And Laura Friend, principal at Luther Burbank, approached me a couple of times and said, you know, would you think about joining the school committee? And this time, it was the right time. So I'm really happy to be a part of this group and I have a lot of learning to do, I think.
Thank you. We're so thrilled that you could be part of this. And just, and thank you for the, I'm so glad that your experience at Neshoba has, has been so good. Thanks. And Rich Eckel?
Hi, everybody. My name is Rich Eckel. I live here in Stowe. I, I guess, why did I move to Stowe? I grew up in the area. I grew up in Concord. And when we found out, we had a
And when we found out, we had a. A one and a half year old and then all of a sudden we were having twins 18 months later. So we we went from man to man to zone. So we had to, we we started looking around for a place to live that had a driveway and a in a garage. We thought that was critical. So we started driving out towards Concord, realized we didn't have the money to tear down something. After we bought a a house. So we we kept driving to Stowe and really liked it here and I've been here for 10, 10 years. And and actually our twins just turned 10 today, so that's how we keep. Keep track of the years. So. My mom was a teacher for over 30 years in Lincoln, the Lincoln Schools, teaching for. The the Hanscom Kids and then she taught in Concord kindergarten and first grade for many years. My my family general believes of and community service and so I believe in that too. I've served a number of capacities on the on the soccer, Stowe Soccer Board and on the Nishoba United Board as well for soccer. And I've been on the Finance Committee for the last seven years, last three years as the Chair. So my motivation is that, you know, this is an important part of my three daughters' development. I have an 11 year, 11 year old that's starting at Hale and the twins are going to be fifth graders at a center. And, you know, being on the Finance Committee analyzing the budget. You know, 65, 60, 65 cents of every dollar goes to schools, right, to either Nishoba. The Lion Chair or to Minuteman. So. I'm interested a little more about how the budget works, I guess I'm kind of strange like that. But but I'm mostly interested in understanding how the school operates and and hoping to. Bring some of my my tools and experience and skills to the committee and. So, and I know all of our, the Stowe Committee members well and I've I've worked with Brooke and Pat, so hopefully I'll. Fit in and not rock the boat too much.
Rocking the boat, that's how we have fun. Thank you and welcome, and I would be remiss if I did not congratulate Steve Rubenstein on his reelection to the committee. And as you may recall, Brett stepped in to finish the term of Elise Crossland and was with us in May. But now he has officially been elected, two or three year term, so congratulations Brett. And thanks for for sticking with us. Okay, so the next item I will move to is citizens comments. And the citizens comments are all related to our agenda item. And about the high school mascot. I have a statement to read and then I have. A few others and I I told the other individuals, I got their permission to excerpt, read excerpts. From their statements, so I won't be reading the whole thing, but the first one. Is from the Citizens for Mascot Change. Is a committee that includes Jenny Blount, Laurie Burnett, Erin Bush, Alina Carter, Joanna Miller and Morris Seiler. Joined by Rachel Tepper, creator of the change.org petition petition in favor of a new mascot. In listening to those who oppose change, one idea keeps coming up over and over again. The concept that a chieftain is the embodiment of a leader. It is clear that this idea is held within high regard and respect within the student and alumni community. We too find this to be an admirable aim. We understand that when Nishoba chose the chieftain as a mascot. The intention was to pay respect to the Native American people who inhabited this land first. While the use of the chieftain was originally intended to honor the Nipmuck tribe. It has become clear that in 59 years, the intent did not align with the impact. With expanding understanding and change in our society, it is time that we also change. Less than one year ago, the Nipmuck Tribal Council wrote. We have very publicly decried the use of Native American mascots. Even when the organization using said mascots, using said mascots. Believes that they are in some way flattering or used as a means of honoring Native Americans. Uplifting their voice is a letter from Woponik, and I'm probably pronouncing that wrong, Language Reclamation Project. To our high school, asking for the removal and replacement of the chieftain mascot. And I will include that letter as part of the meeting materials. Within the calls of this anti-racist racism movement we are living through. One phrase comes up time and again, know better, do better. With the above statement and decades of evidence-based research, we know better and now it is time for us as a community to do better. It is our hope that when the time comes to pick a new mascot. The ideals of the group who originally picked the chieftain's mascot are upheld and a new mascot will be chosen. Which will bring pride to every member of the Nishoba community and alienate none. Finally, we support the alumni, the students, the parents and the community. We recognize that this is difficult for so many reasons and we want to stand together with our community. As we dig dig deep for so many reasons, we want to stand together with our community, I'm sorry. We recognize that this is difficult for so many reasons and we want to stand together with our community. As we dig deep and ask ourselves, is it worth holding on to something from the past over honoring the wishes of the current Nipmuck tribe? We stand with Nishoba, we are Nishoba. The next. Comment I received is from Brooke Lindsay, who is a rising junior at the high school. Nishoba students, the majority of them being white, may think they understand what it means to be a chieftain, but they don't. None of us could understand what it is to live in fear, to be cast out and massacred by our white ancestors. These being the same ancestors that we like to talk so highly of in our history books. None of us could understand the suffering endured on the infamous journey known as the the Trail of Tears. And the humiliation of being forced into small reservations with limited resources. None of us could understand the feeling of neglect when reservations requested help from the government due to COVID-19. Only to receive body bags and response. Native Americans have survived all this and yet we still continue to mock them with caricatures of their rich culture and history. Rather than discuss how we have wronged them, we choose to hide behind offensive symbols and mockery. I ask you, how is this any different than the history of the black race in our, the history of blackface in our country? Time and time again, white people exploit and humiliate minorities for our own benefit, will you break the cycle? Next comment is from Natalie Lindsay, who is a 2015 alumni of Nishoba. Nishoba has a student population that's about 97% white and 0% Native American. Nishoba sits on land that was stolen from the Nipmuck Nation, land which those people were driven and on which they were slaughtered. To continue using this mascot is undeniably racist and disrespectful to a people who were systematically murdered. And driven from their ancestral lands by the founders of this country. There are some people who acknowledge, I'm sorry. Those who want to keep this tradition. Are doing so from some combination of misplaced nostalgia and refusal to acknowledge the implication in racist tradition. They will not present any argument that refutes the racism of this ma- mascot. They will speak of how they were proud to be a chieftain and how it's tradition. I would urge you to realize that there is another segment of the student body that does not feel proud to have gone to Nishoba due to this mascot. And that of the few indigenous students who have attended Nishoba, they may not have been able to feel safe or valued there. Changing a mascot will not negate good experiences students have had at Nishoba. It will just make it more possible for everyone to feel welcomed and appreciated there. And this is from an alumni from the class of 91. Michael Blanding. In high school, I was a proud member of the Nishoba Chieftain Marching Band. I played the war chant on my trumpet as our drum major dressed in fringed garb and feathered headdress danced in mock Indian circles. We didn't know any better back then, if anything, we thought we were celebrating Native Americans for their leadership and courage. In the past 30 years, however, we've come a long way as a school, a community and as a society. In learning about the harmful effects of appropriating the names and symbols of other cultures. I now believe it's wrong to take a still existing group of people and reduce them to a violent stereotype with whatever the intent. And that is especially true for a group of people that was persecuted and marginalized throughout New England and American history. For that reason, I was happy to sign a petition and support the long overdue change of the Nishoba mascot by dropping the name chieftain. I hope you will too. Making this change does not take away from the many happy and proud memories. We all have of participating in sports, music and other extracurricular activities at Nishoba. On the contrary, it shows true courage, leadership and growth as a community. To be willing to examine ourselves and change when necessary to uphold our values. And then the last comment comes from Ramesh. Again, I apologize for mispronouncing the name if I do. Govindin. And she says, she's the class of 2009. I love Nishoba, the district gave me some of the happiest years of my life. Nishoba High School is a truly wonderful school which provided me not only with the best education I could have asked for. With a loving community full of lifelong friends. While a student, the chieftain mascot didn't bother me. As an Asian Indian American student, I only remember remarking on the irony of wearing an Indian headdress. At cross-country meets while being the wrong type of Indian. It wasn't until I got to college at Dartmouth, which was founded as a religious school to quote unquote. Civilize the natives of New Hampshire, that I realized how harmful Native American mascots truly are. I always held the chieftain as a symbol of pride, honor and strength. So it was surprising to me that Dartmouth had changed their mascot from the famous Dartmouth Indians to something lame like the Dartmouth Big Green. Through conversations with classmates, I discovered that modern Native Americans don't see these mascots have a sign of respect in any way. America as America as a country has never honored or respected Native Americans. We took their land, we drove them from their homes and confined them to reservations where they still live in deprivation today. To name our high school mascots after them is to rewrite history to make us look like we always respected them, to make us look better. Having a mascot that represents a group of people we persecuted and murdered because of their race. To trivialize them as emblems of physical strength and ferocity to intimidate the opposite side in sports matches is not a sign of respect. It's using a culture we victimized for our own self-aggrandizement. We can take pride in Nishoba, one of the best schools in our area, both academically and athletically, without demeaning a whole race of people. I am proud to have gone to Nishoba and I will always love our school, but that has nothing to do with the mascot. So let's change the mascot because we recognize that it's hurtful and insensitive. But keep our pride in who we are and what we do for the community. So I I thank those who submitted citizens comments and. I want to move to the next agenda item under promoting equity and acceptance. I want to acknowledge the engagement of the community on this issue. As of this afternoon, we have received 106 emails over the course of the past week. We are very appreciative of the respectful way in which everyone expressed their points of view. We also appreciate the many articles and research studies that we received on Native American mascots and iconography. Although they were opposing viewpoints, I think it's important to note the common values that came through in the emails. Among them, leadership, advocacy, pride, compassion, agency, equity and justice. As the school committee, we are grounded by the district's core values, among them excellence and achievement and respect. For students diverse backgrounds, identities, strengths and challenges. At our June 17th meeting, we added an emphasis on equity and justice and ensuring that voices, concerns and fears in our community are heard and addressed. I would like everyone to keep our core values in mind as we have our discussion tonight. So before I invite discussion, I am going to exert my privilege as the Chair to start off. And give you my thoughts on this. So for me, all the information we received and the voices we heard from. The most important voice, in fact, the only voice that matters to me in making a decision. Is that of the members of our community who are part of the Nipmuck Tribal Nation. Their message to us could not be more direct or clear. And we all read the letter. That was sent by Kenneth Gould Senior, the Tribal Council Chairman of the Nipmuck Nation Tribal Council. To the Superintendent of Schools in Killingley, Connecticut. This was sent about a year ago. And just at the very end, they say, our position on the matter is well documented and I welcome you to review the attached public statement. The Nipmuck Tribal Council made in September of 2016 on this matter. Specifically regarding Native American masquerade in Massachusetts. Our opinion on the matter has not changed and we sincerely hope. That this letter finds you well and makes our position abundantly clear. So that statement, as you know. Was made last year, but in September of 2016, Love T Richardson, a council member and the tribal clerk. Released on behalf of the nation, a a statement. About the their position on these the mascots. The misrepresentation of Native Americans has been an issue that the United States has struggled with for some time. Native American youth have a suicide rate three times that of their peers and Native American high school age males. Have a high, have a suicide rate that's eight times greater. Mascoting Native Americans in light of these statistics is reckless. And endangers the most vulnerable population of young people in the country. And is done purely for entertainment purposes. The Native American mascot establishes a hostile learning environment. The impact of stereotypes of my social identity of a group has been proven to cause mental health effects. Such as low self-esteem among Native Americans and negative attitudes towards Native Americans amongst non-Native Americans. When non-Native students are shown stereotypical Native American sports images, they are more likely to endorse stereotypes about other minority groups. The practice of masking a people gives the community a license to act out on the ugly stereotype. And causes them to perpetuate it in public, much like the offensive war hoop and tomahawk chop. Imagine for a moment what these negative stereotypes. Mascoting would cause for African Americans, Asian Americans and Latinos. There is a reason no one wants to be massoted, there is a reason no other ethnic group is massoted to the degree that Native Americans are. It means having our culture misappropriated without our consent, to have it clowned. Mascoting another group of people without their permission isn't about love, respect and honor, but about privilege and power. The same privilege and power that discriminates against Native American people and our nation every single day. There are 43 schools in Massachusetts alone that still have Native American mascots. The schools can argue to keep their ethnic-related mascot if they have the permission of local Native American tribes. However, the Nipmuck Nation Tribal Council has unanimously voted. That any and all sports mascot depicting Native people is directly tied to the history of genocide in this country against our people. The youth, the use of ethnic-related sports team mascots, symbols and nicknames has to stop. This from four years ago. So. Heard a lot in our communication about the use of the term chieftains. So in seeking clarity about the use of chieftain, I was able to connect with a member of the Cherokee Nation who was also a scholar of indigenous history. This is what I was told. Problem is that a group that is not native is associating themselves with the mythological lies idea of chieftains. It relegates us to being considered a people of the past. Instead of people here and now. What stands in the way of you recognizing this and doing what the Nipmuck want. So, and finally, this is from an indigenous woman who lives in our district. Not all indigenous people are the same, but there are overlapping cultural traditions of my nation and the Nipmuck people. Was a point in time the school could say the name was chieftain. There was a point in time the school could say the name was chosen to be an honor, that it wasn't intended to be offensive, that having Native thing mascots, memorabilia, and pretending to be Indians for school spirits wasn't supposed to be dehumanizing and normalizing racism to the students. That time is gone. Keeping something because it's tradition, the way things are, in the face of new information, is wrong. Isn't it better for a school to show their students that an important part of learning is changing when you're given new information? Here is an opportunity to create new traditions of treating all people, including indigenous people, as human beings. Many school districts in Massachusetts," now, these are my words, "many school districts in Massachusetts are grappling with this topic. We, the Nishoba Regional School District, have an opportunity to be leaders in advocating for and amplifying the position of the Nipmuck tribe, to say, 'We hear you,' and to act in a way that demonstrates that we honor your culture." Sorry. I did more crying reading these emails this week, and I think some of you had the same experience. I don't know how you, for me, it was just a very emotional experience. And that's why I don't understand how we would not act to stop it. So now, while I compose myself, I will open the discussion, and please raise your hand, and I will recognize you if you would like to speak. Elaine?
Okay, I was wondering who was gonna start. I have a lot to say. I won't say it all, I promise. And I will try not to repeat some of the things that Kathy said. I actually want to start with an apology. More than once since I've been on the school committee over the past two years, someone has said, "I think we need to do something about the mascot," and my response, I see now, was really privileged. I said, "Yeah, I know it's problematic, but I got bigger problems right now. I can't deal with that." And I apologize to those people, but mostly to indigenous people for taking what I see now as a very self-centered viewpoint on the issue and for minimizing what they have said in their own words over and over again. Like many, I'm sure you've heard a story about a few years ago, the Nipmuck Tribe asked us to change our logo, but otherwise everything was fine. And I heard that story, didn't research it, took it as fact. That was wrong, and I apologize for that as well because, I mean, it turns out the story is completely false, but I did the easy thing by not looking into it more. Which brings me to what I think is the overwhelmingly central argument here. It's basically what Kathy said. The Nipmuck Tribe has loudly and clearly asked us to stop using Native mascots. So for me, this is about consent. We don't have their consent in this, so therefore we stop. End of story. We haven't listened in the past, but we're here today, and we can start listening now. I know that retiring a mascot that is so beloved and has such an important meaning to so many people is a lot to ask. It is a lot to ask. But our own discomfort, in my opinion, cannot negate respecting the directly expressed wishes of a tremendously marginalized group of people. And I have also heard a lot about how the school committee needs to have more of a dialogue with the community. And this is, I've thought a lot about this because this one did strike me particularly hard. Most of our decisions on the school committee are about what is the best fit for Nishoba. There's usually a ton of options that we could choose, and we're kind of forging our own path with no clear direction forward. And in those situations, it makes total sense that we should slow everything down and get multiple perspectives and try to draw in as many people as possible, and then sometimes we even take a majority rules approach to it. And I get that, and I totally agree with that. But in this case, that needs to come after we start to right our wrong of not listening to what the Tribal Nation is asking us to do. We have many, many documents now that say we are harming indigenous people. We don't have their consent. We should stop. I do think that after we make a decision, that should actually be the beginning of the conversation. I think that we really need a community conversation about how to move forward. We all clearly need a better understanding of the history of the lands that we live on. And I read a lot of great emails about the values that students learned while they were at Nishoba, things like leadership and teamwork and a strong sense of community, and I think that we need to talk about that and how all students can strive for those goals and to take pride in them. Because the name that's on the uniform didn't make you a leader or a good teammate. Like, you did that. You did the work. The people did the work to instill those values. And that's what we should be talking about, the values themselves. We need to have a community conversation about the work that it takes to build those skills in our community and how we can all live those values. So that's my two cents on this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mary?
Okay, and I do want to echo some of what Kathy said. And I just have every confidence that every member of the school committee who was on school committee and received over a hundred emails, read every single one of them, as I did. And even when there were sections that were cut and pasted, there would be at the beginning some kind of identification of the person and explaining the person's relationship to Nishoba. And so, for the civility and for the thought and care that people put into those emails, I just want to acknowledge that and thank people for that. As a former English teacher, I'd also like to say that those emails were so well-written. And so, to all of the teachers who had these, many alumni, many parents and students all the way through up to the high school, great job because these are intelligent-thinking, passionate people who wrote to us. So my doctoral dissertation centers on global education and the need to educate students as members of our global society. One avenue to do that is to increase cross-cultural understanding. The more we learn about others, the more we can appreciate both differences and similarities. History does matter. Now that I've been on this planet for, you know, over seven decades, the historical perspective doesn't always seem as if it happened that long ago when I can remember, you know, Vietnam War and living through so many significant incidents in our United States and world history. But there is a timing, and I also believe that we were created to evolve, to become more knowledgeable, to increase our frames of reference. And so I am very much in favor of moving as quickly as possible to retire and to replace the Nishoba team name with all respect to, as people have said, to when it was originally brought about and the intention then. But the awareness that we have now compels us to move forward and to change.
Thank you, Mary. Other comments? Leah?
So I think that it's really important for us to observe a process that everybody can feel comfortable with. So I think that in the past, we've agreed that to introduce and to act on something within the span of fifteen minutes is probably not enough time to bring other people along. So I know that some people are just hearing about this for the first time. Some people have not even plugged into this conversation at all yet. Like you said, we have a hundred emails, and there are two kind of boutique social media pages that have gotten some foot traffic. But I think that before the school committee acts definitively tonight, we need to give a little bit of space and time for the community to process with us, not just us at them. There needs to be, I think, some time for public forum that perhaps is not going to change your convictions or the way that you plan to vote. But again, I think in all fairness to the people we represent and to the kids, the high school kids themselves, it might be worthwhile to not take a vote tonight and wait not long. You know, I have a lot of opinions on this myself. I don't actually, I mean, if you're gonna force a vote tonight, then I do want to speak to my opinions, but I would respectfully ask my colleagues not to vote tonight.
Thank you. Brett, did you have your hand up before?
Did. Can you hear me tonight?
Go ahead.
Fantastic. So I did read through all the emails, talked to a few people, and listened to both sides. And again, I think the most important voice is of the Nipmuck Tribe. So that's kind of where I'm leaning. And, you know, let's see what goes from here, but I think when we move forward, we need to involve as many students as possible, the community, to see what we do going forward. And, you know, I think right now, there's, sorry, Elaine, but there are a few things that are more important than the mascot. You know, we gotta worry about getting our kids back in the schools, getting our teachers back in the schools, and doing it safely. And that's my first priority, not to dismiss the mascot issue. It's important. But I do want to move on with getting everybody back in school safely and making sure we have the money to do it. That's really where I'm at right now.
Thank you. Amy?
Yeah, I also have a lot of opinions on this, but to me, this seems like it would be very difficult not to take action on this, given the opinion of the Nipmuck Tribe and their wishes, also the fact that the school committee, at the last meeting, passed an anti-racism resolution and a statement on responsibility for racial justice in which they, I can read from it. I wasn't a part of the committee at that time, but it says that we are compelled to evaluate our policies and procedures and are obliged to change those institutional practices that create different outcomes for different racial and minority groups. It's important that we, as a school committee, educate ourselves about racial justice and active anti-racism. And I feel like this would be an important, immediate step to show our commitment towards anti-racism as a district. And I did appreciate the thoughtful emails that were received on both sides of the issues. But I just feel compelled to speak in favor of taking a vote tonight to change the mascot.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Joseph, is your hand up? Yes?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm going to throw my support behind my colleague from Stowe. I concur with her wholeheartedly. I think we've talked a lot about, you know, native culture tonight, but I would like to remind our committee that of our own legal and administrative processes in our country, that the two pillars of our due process are notice and opportunity to be heard. And I couldn't agree more with Leah. I do think that despite what people's opinions are and despite the sensitivity to this issue, that both sides of this issue should be given the opportunity to be heard. I expressed that to you privately yesterday in our conversation, Madam Chairman. I expressed it to people that I met on the town green at the election on Monday, and I expressed it here in public. I think it's important that people, both sides of this argument, have an opportunity to be heard. And I couldn't concur more with my colleague from Stowe. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Mike?
So much of what I was gonna say has already been said, so I don't want to reiterate that. I appreciate everybody's opinion. I would like to say that from the lens of a teacher, I think what we're being asked to do is deciding which direction in which we will move forward will lead to the richest learning experience for our district and for our kids. In other words, are we going to allow ourselves to create a richer learning opportunity by keeping our current longstanding symbol? Or are we going to gain a richer experience by actively changing it, which would thereby trigger broader community conversations? So we're being asked with making a choice of how we will or will not choose to evolve in the manner with which we will evolve. And I think, I can't remember who used the term "evolution," but that sort of resonated with me, and I appreciate that. Having said that, I am not supportive of voting on this issue this evening or frankly, any other issue on the same date on which it was first introduced as an agenda item. In the past, I felt rushed when this has happened, and to do so tonight may put some in that same uncomfortable feeling. And I think the decision to bypass this procedure runs the risk of being subjective. In other words, this is worthy of voting on the same night that it is first presented as an agenda item, and this is not. This we can wait on. So I think in the spirit of consistency, I think it sets a dangerous precedent for this committee to do so. Just like all of us, I have pretty strong feelings and convictions. As a matter of process, I would prefer to vote at the next earliest date, but not today.
Thank you. Other comments? Steve?
I just want to be clear that I've had a number of social studies teachers from high school reach out to me, and they do teach the racism and the whole situation with the mascot and the whole thing. And they're concerned about the situation as well. But it is being taught in the schools. I mean, we do discuss it, and it's helpful because the mascot is there, because then they can discuss what went on. I do want to bring up, and I know it really doesn't matter that much, but this is like a million, couple-million-dollar issue if, in fact, we change the brand. It's not just change the brand, because you're talking uniforms and you're talking signage, and everything that we have is the end with the spear on it, which we went to, I believe it was Pete Richards, probably twenty years ago, who we tried to move away from the actual headdress and that kind of stuff. We've been very clear to the students, they're not to do the chop stuff, and we don't wear the headdress, and the students don't dress up in the way that they used to. It's a learning process, and we're willing to go whichever way you guys decide. But we are teaching the stuff in the school, and I want you guys to know that and understand that.
Thank you, Steve. Other comments? Joseph?
Madam Chairman, I believe Mr. Rubenstein had his hand up. I was actually gonna make a motion, but I'd let Steve talk first.
Oh, that's all right. Go ahead, Joe.
I was actually gonna make a motion that we tabled this matter until our first meeting in the fall.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to say, I have come probably seven hundred and thirty-eight degrees on this issue in the last couple of days, particularly today. For a long time, I was a firm believer that the only people who really had a right to decide on this were current students of Nishoba and the alumni. However, I've come to the conclusion that really is a bigger issue. And after reading a hundred and some-odd emails, I've kind of come to the conclusion that perhaps we, as a school board, need to, if for want of a better term, impose our decision upon the school. The other piece of my concern, or the other way I was thinking, is the ability to possibly separate the spear and feathers from the word "chieftain." The word "chieftain" is a term for a leader that is a Northern European term. And it's a term that if you went to see the clans in Scotland or Ireland or even the Vikings in uh, the Scandinavian countries, you would see that same term used in regard to their leaders, the leaders that they pick or choose or by birth or however that leadership is, is done. However, like I said, I've come around this circle four or five times now. And at this point, I'm, we cannot separate it. I think it's too ingrained both in our in our privilege, and I'll use that word rather than the full word that's being used these days, to acquaint the fir, the word chieftain. It would almost be like saying sachem or medicine man or something like that. But the word uh, chieftain has become too, too closely aligned with uh, the indigenous peoples that we have not been kind to at all. I'm currently reading a book about the Texas Rangers and believe me, they are not the sparkling group of heroes that uh, many of us grew up believing them to be, watching TV and things like that. I think based upon our statement at our last meeting, based upon the hundred plus emails that we have now received, that it is, there is no reason for us to dilly-dally around this particular issue at this time, especially since we probably will not be meeting again until September, or at least until our goal-setting session, at which time I am going to be bringing up something that will probably upset some other people too. But it, it is within the same vein. I think that we really need to um, make this decision tonight. Uh, I'm sorry, Michael, if you feel rushed, but we've had over a week's worth of uh, emails and plenty of time to really think about it. And I think that we should vote on it tonight and get the process started. Yes, it's going to be an expensive thing. And um, I think that uh, there's no reason to delay it, especially based upon the way most of us, if not all of us, feel about the statements that we uh, we made at our last meeting.
Thank you. Other comments? Leah? Oh, I'm sorry, Leah, can I let Sharon speak?
Oh, sure.
Sharon?
I'm a new kid on the block here, so forgive me if I am not following procedure and I'm not nearly as eloquent as all of you others who has spoken. I guess I kind of have a question, and my question is, can it, can it be a little of, of both? Because on the one hand, the argument is the Nipmuck Nation has asked us to stop. Um, and it seems pretty clear that, that people are feeling like, you know, that we need to make this decision now. But at the same time, there's definitely um, an argument to be made for processing and, and for taking time to really be thoughtful. And then there's this other piece that I'm hearing that is about communication and about sharing information with the community um, and processing information with the people of, of our towns. And I'm wondering, regardless of vote now or not vote now, it, it, how is the way to share the information and the thought process that is happening in terms of understanding the past? You know, how this has evolved in terms of the mascot? And while 30 years ago, it was a very different time and we have learned and we are different now and we have a different understanding now. Along with recognizing that for many of the people who wrote um, in support of keeping the mascot, the, the values that it embodied to them. So that we're hearing, these are the values that people are, are holding. Leadership, integrity. Um, I've forgotten all of the ones that you listed. And, and kind of smooth the path a little bit that these are the things, these are the values that we are looking at or upholding in thinking about changing the name so that people are understanding that we're making a change in or considering making a change. I'm sorry, got interrupted by the dog. Got a little distracted. That we're considering making this change because with our understanding of the way things are now, this is, this is clearly a racist term. It is clearly something that the nation, the Nipmuck Nation does not want and, and has asked us to stop. But also, we recognize that there are values here. So what can we come up with that will embody those values? Is this making sense at all?
Well, I'd like to respond. Um, typically, the school committee, the role of the school committee, one of the roles is to uh, make policy. And um, our policies are based on a, a number of things, including state law and our, our core values. Now, we don't have a policy specific to this, but we've been very clear about our core values. We have, we, we value excellence. We value, we say that we value respect for, for differences and, and cultural understanding. We made a commitment and we made a resolution to stand for active anti-racism. And I, I am, I am passionate about, as you can probably tell, but here is a minority group. And the fact that there is a gross imbalance of power, in my mind, gross imbalance of power. We as the white majority are saying, yep, we hear you. Can you wait a little longer? Can you just wait? And I, I have a real problem with that. And I, Mike, I think that we have, um, there is no hard and fast um, policy about um, voting the same day as something is raised. Um, and we have the facility to be flexible and we can make those decisions. But to me, it's just another slap in the face to this group who have been very clear for years and years and years and years and years. And we're saying, gee, us white folk need to process more. We just need to think about it a little more because we need to feel comfortable. We need that. So please wait. You know, we all agree it has to change, but we need more process. I get that, but I don't agree with it. And I think it's wrong. And I think we have an opportunity right now, for right or wrong. And we hear all the time, justice denied is justice denied. And that's where we are. And it is a gross application of our responsibility to uphold our core values, to put this off. Steve?
I would like to move that we hold a vote this evening to decide on the fate of the mascot and emblem of the ma, of Nishoba Regional High School.
Madam Chairman, I got a point of order.
Yes, Joseph?
I moved originally to table this, okay?
You can't unless it's a motion.
And there was a second.
I, I, excuse me, I, I moved to table. You didn't ask for a second. Now, if nobody wants to sign it, then that's fine. The motion dies on the table, but you didn't ask for a second.
No, not, you're right. Okay. Can I hear from the other folks who have their hands up? And then, Joe, we will entertain your motion. Mary? Did you hand up?
I, I did. Just to give a little bit of regional perspective, uh, the state of Maine has um, voted to ban all Indian reference, American Native Indian uh, references, um, logos, et cetera. It very, well, you know, the reality is that such, um, such emotion will probably come to Massachusetts too. That's, that, at some point. So um, I, as I listen to everything, uh, everyone has said and, and we are a thoughtful committee. We really are. We are people who think about um, about, about issues. But the more I hear, the more I go back to something that Michael said, that as we move forward with some kind of a committee that will make the decision to keep core values right up front and to decide on what does the future of Nishoba Regional High School and the district, what does it look like? And what epitomizes that going forward? Um, with a, with a clean break? So I mean, there are so many reasons um, to do this. But um, I, I also think that, so if we were to, we could second Joseph's motion, but then we all have a chance for discussion before a vote. Or it could be that somebody doesn't even want to um, to second it. But if we're going to go by protocol, that would be the thing to do.
Kathy, can I get a word in?
Excuse me, excuse me. Mary was recognized. If you want to be recognized, please raise your hand.
I, I, it's been raised for a couple minutes.
Sorry, I think it's the angle, Rich. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to overlook you. Go right ahead.
No, that's okay.
Especially.
I'm sorry, finish.
All right, especially to Rich. And he knows why, because I thought his name was Eric. But I know his name is Rich now. I will refer, he can take the floor.
Oh, thank you kindly. So I guess the only thing I wanted to say is just from a practical sense. You know, I, I was voted on the committee on Saturday. I got an email address on Monday and I got more emails in the last three days on one topic than I think I've ever gotten on anything. I also do have a kid in high school. So to be honest with you, it, you know, this might be my privilege, as it's commonly called these days. But I haven't been confronted with this issue. I, I hadn't, hadn't even really thought about it. I was educated on, you know, the atrocities of what had happened to Native Americans and so forth. But um, I haven't even finished reading all the emails yet, right? It sounds like a lot of people have been considering this for a long time and I, I really appreciate that. And I'm frankly floored at how, how eloquent everybody's been and, and all the feedback. But I share the, I share the concerns of one of my fellow Stowe representatives, and forgive me, I don't even know everybody's name on the committee yet. The other gentleman that said, you know, we, we need to have a process. I really do think we don't need to rush through this. I, I don't even know when the next meeting will be. I frankly thought it would be soon, so we would, I'd have a little more time to consider that. If it's going to be September, that changes the calculus for me. But if it's going to be sooner than that, you know, I'd like some time to actually talk about this with my wife. Um, and in here, you know, we've heard a ton about how people think it should, you know, the, the, the uh, the, the iconography and so forth should be taken, taken away and changed. I totally appreciate that. I guess I just want to make sure I'm making the right decision, not based on like a rush to judgment, right? That's why when people are making decisions, like especially in like legal cases, there's a process to go through, so a motion doesn't take over. And that's, that would be my, that, that's what I would be advocating. So I, I'll actually second, if, if we're asking for a second, I'll second.
But let me, I would, somebody else. All right, Sharon?
I just wanted to say I apologize. I, I did not mean to cause upset. I meant to be asking a question. Um, and I think that it kind of got lost a little bit. My question is how to present our thought process to the people, to our, our our towns, so that we recognize that there are feelings on both sides and that we believe in this course of action that the committee chooses to take. And this is why, so that we are respecting all, we're respecting the people who are opposed to a name change because they feel like it embodies certain values. And we're saying, we're hearing that, you're saying it embodies these values and we do embody these values and we want that to be clearly reflected in who we present ourselves to be. And who we present ourselves to be is partly presented through our mascot and our logo and all of the things that we wear that present us. So I apologize, Mike, my.
Don't, don't, and I have to apologize for my emotion because maybe I'm, I'm, I'm not, I, I guess I'm, I, I, what I can't understand, I really, really can't understand it. I can't understand why when the Nipmuck Tribal Council says, "Don't use it." And we have all this evidence about why we shouldn't use it, that we equivocate. That's what I really, 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 really don't understand. And I think there are other issues that will be unpacked from this, the, the cost. You know, we, this isn't, you know, we, we, we revel in our creativity and intelligence and rightfully so. I think that making the statement that we hear you, we honor and respect you. And for me, all these years, I mean, Elaine apologized for, for not, I was on the, the committee in 2016 when it came before us. I could have very easily said, "Let's put it on the agenda." I didn't. But I guess I don't understand why. We can figure everything else out with groups, with kids, with the community. But we have a clear, direct message. It's disrespectful. And it's a product of your privilege that you have this control over us. And I, I just don't understand why we would persist in that for one more minute. Amy?
Thank you for uh, taking my comments. Um, I wanted to just say that I, I didn't get to I didn't get to say that I appreciate the value in communicating decisions that are being made by the school committee on something as important as the mascot for the school district. And um, Leah, to what you said, I, I think it is important to give time for people to come along, I think is how you phrased it. But I, I, I definitely feel that um, the time for them to come along is as after the school district has made a decision to be anti-racist and to decide that the mascot that we have doesn't align with our core values and then allow the community to be involved with where we go from there. And by community, I mean kids at the high school. I think that the students at the high school should be an important voice in any of the future discussions that we have around this issue. I think that that is the time to bring the community into what they want their future mascot to be. Because right now, the mascot that we have, especially everything that's going on in the world related to racial justice, racial equity, it's, it's um, it would be hard for me to feel proud of joining the school committee and not making a decision to, to change a mascot that the Nipmuck Nation has asked us to change.
Thank you, Amy. Sharon?
So my question is, can we do both? Can we support the request of the people, the Nipmuck people, who have said to us, "Don't use this," and act? And can we at the same time support the feelings of And can we at the same time support the feelings of the people in our community who want to stand for integrity or, what were the, what were the things? I don't remember them right now. Leadership, compassion, all of those things that people described as being part of their pride in being part of Nishoba. So I, I, I think we can do both. I think we can do both right now. We can, we can make a statement that says, "We hear that this is wrong." "We hear that you are asking us to stop and we've been ignoring you and we will act now." But we at the same time can respect the values that people have described and say, "We will look at, we will consider all of these things" and join us in considering all of these things in moving forward, in choosing something else.
I think that that is, has been expressed, that there is the process, um, moving forward to engage and to look at how we embody those values in other ways. Um, Elaine and then Leah.
Oh, Leah had her hand up first, so she can go first.
Oh, I'm sorry, Leah.
So I think that, uh, Kathy, I know you disagree with me. I can see it all over your face. I get that. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you on substance. I'm disagreeing with this on process. I think that for all intents and purposes, this moment is the first time some people have heard this topic brought up. And I don't think it is right for us to set a precedent that we vote on something like thirteen minutes after we bring it up. And, um, decimate an element of the culture that perhaps all of us vehemently disagree with, but decimate a part of a culture that has been there for sixty years. So all I'm asking, and to, I think, uh, one, somebody asked, "What is the process?" What I would say is we don't, like, once we get Joe's motion seconded and then we discuss it, I would say, maybe give it like five days. And then we meet again and have one agenda item just to vote. But I think that it is disingenuous at best. And I'm not defending anyone. Uh, this is purely on process. I am concerned that we are about to vote on some, something that is so important to our community. And there are a lot of people for keeping it the, the way that it is. And so I think that on a matter of process, we need to wait five days. I will hold a listening session for the public. I will be the only one there, if you want me to be. And I will collect all the data for all of us and bring it back to us. But I think that there needs to be one moment of dialogue that exists outside of social media and email. And that is the last thing I will say on that.
See?
Being the make-believe parliamentarian of this group, or at least have in the past, Joe. Um, can you, are you, ta- do you wanna, is your motion to table the discussion? Or to table a vote? And if there's gonna be, there has to be a motion to vote on it, seconded. And then you can put in, I think, your motion to table.
And, and before we do that, Joe, let me apologize to you. I am not a parliamentarian. Steve may be a pretend one, but I am not one in any stretch of the imagination. And you, you come to us with, um, uh, uh, you know, a long background as a school committee member in another school district, so you're better versed in this. So, um, again, um, I am passionate. I don't have a poker face or poker anything. Um, so, um, I, I wanna be respectful of the process um, in terms of the parliamentary, whatever it is that we're doing. So if I can rewind a little bit, Joe made a motion to table, but to Steve's point, are you tabling the, what are you tabling? What is your motion?
Okay, the motion would be to table any vote on this this evening. I'd like to put this over until our first meeting, whether it be late August, early September. Um, just as a matter of clarification, I, I don't know if motion, did, did, did I hear Rick, uh, second the motion? Is that?
Can we start, we do a do-over? Can you make your motion and then we'll get?
All right, then, I, I would move that we table any vote on this till our first meeting in, uh, our first meeting for the fall semester that, uh, in, in September or August.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Elaine?
Um, uh, till the fall, way too far for me. I think that sends a strong message that, uh, like somebody else said, and I don't remember who said it, that, um, yeah, this is important to us, but wait, it's just not the right time. Um, it's, it's never the right time. Um, I do have something here that I did not write. Um, but it may help with this discussion about tabling and when to have conversations and things. Um, and I, I think it actually goes back to what Sharon was asking, um, many times. And appreciate that you kept asking the question. Um, I, I think we all realize that this isn't something that just happened in a snap of a fingers and then we all of a sudden, like tomorrow, we have a new mascot. Like, that's not the way this works. I think we're separating a vote to retire a mascot with the process of how to create something new. Um, and it actually looks like it's been suggested that, uh, the mascot would be retired effective January first, twenty twenty-one, so that a committee, um, I won't get into the details, um, would start immediately to work on communication processing and creating something new as a community. And that by, by January first of twenty twenty-one, we would have something in place. So I don't know if that helps this conversation or hurts this conversation. Um, but I think that we can all appreciate that this doesn't happen. The logistics don't happen overnight. Um, and that there's a six-month window here that potentially would be used to communicate, to process, to bring in the perspectives, to hold surveys or contests or however we want that to look, um, whatever that commu- community conversation looks like. And so that the process is actually done by January first.
Thank you. Other comments? Um, Leah?
Could we move to amend the motion to have the vote taken at a special meeting that we set up at the end of July or, or something like that?
Motion maker amend the motion, Joe?
She can, she can, if you're asking me, do I wanna amend the motion? I don't. If, if I can respond, Madam Chairman, to my colleague from Stowe, um, you know, to actually both of my colleagues from Stowe, I, you know, I'm only saying September because I believe that's the next meeting we have on our agenda. If we want to set up a special meeting, that's fine. But, you know, I heard my colleague from Stone, Ms. Viverito, talk about having a listening session. And, you know, what I would like to see, if this is of any interest to anybody on the committee, is to have a public hearing on this and give every person an opportunity, give it maybe two hours. Members of the public, students, parents, anybody who wants to come in. Two hours, hour and a half, give everybody an opportunity to be heard. It, it's, it's distressing that, you know, we make these decisions based on emails. And there's things that were written in the emails about, you know, incidences that occurred that were rebutted by the administration. And there were other incidences that, you know, people are talking about certain faculty members shouldn't be allowed to speak on this. And so I, I think it's an open, transparent process that I'd be looking for. And I'm, I agree with Mr. Horish. I, I don't, I feel rushed on this. Um, you know, I don't have any strong feelings one way or the other in regards to how or what we use as a mascot or a nickname or a logo or what have you. I just am all about fundamental fairness and everybody getting an opportunity to be heard. So, you know, I, I, my, if she wants me to amend the motion to a date in August or the end of July, it, it's, it's fine with me. I, you know, I just don't have to, I would defer to the superintendent on this as to how we would do that, when we would do it, how we would do it, you know? I was hoping in the fall that we would be back meeting in Bolton and that we could invite people into the meeting room and, and have an open, transparent, tr- transparent, uh, hearing on this.
Mary?
Uh, well, well, that sounds, um, glorious, uh, we would meet in person. Uh, I, I think we haven't talked enough about, um, the COVID nineteen and the fact that the pandemic and that, um, I, I remember Brett talking about the fact that our, our, a lot of our focus here has to be on on reopening, whatever that will mean, and getting students and faculty into the building safely. There's a tremendous amount of work, um, to be done. And, and, um, not all of us are going, and I would think not all of the public is going to feel uh, comfortable about being in, uh, any kind of an open, an open meeting. I know that I won't probably until, um, until we have a vaccine that's, that's proven. Um, so I mean, that's, that's really kind of a discouragement. Uh, and, and in that time, in a way, thank goodness we have technology. Thank goodness that we can meet via Zoom. Thank goodness, um, for emails. Uh, I didn't really follow the social media aspect to this. Um, but we have a lot to do. I also wanna point out that this is a special meeting. This was, this is, this was not one of our scheduled meetings. And again, the pandemic pushed, pushed us, pushed, you know, um, pushed things and pushed them off. And especially, we are so happy to have our three new members. Um, and, and so we wanted to have a meeting to be able to have you here. Um, I would really, even if the vote doesn't go the way I hope it would tonight, um, I would really still want to vote on this. And I don't see the feasibility, Joe, of having any kind of an open meeting for everyone. Um, I also think with, that it would, you know, people are at different places in terms of a continuum in regard to this. And whereas our real constituency, um, is, because we, we, we're always focused on our students. Uh, then I'm, I'm not sure that we, we could, would be able to take enough time to be able to educate the whole public and to have everyone, um, feel comfortable, uh, with this. And it's, it's pretty clear cut. So I'm going to vote against, um, discontinuing the conversation. I'm gonna vote against, um, not having a vote tonight. Um, no matter what the outcome, I would like to have a vote. I liked, um, what Elaine talked about. Um, having something like a six-month window because, um, as Steve Cullinane had talked about, you know, there's, there's money involved with this. And there are uniforms that are already, um, bought, so that would give some time. And perhaps we have, um, it seems that we have some very successful, um, alums who, maybe there'd be some way that they could make donations, you know, if we have five oh one C three, um, to be able to help with the costs because certainly we are all very fiscally, um, conscious these days. So I, I, I would really like to, to vote. Um, even though I hear that not everybody is, is comfortable voting tonight.
Thank you, Mary. Um, I'd like to ask everybody a question and I hope everybody will feel comfortable responding. So I hear a lot about our constituencies and their comfort level with our decision. What would you say to the Nipmuck Tribal Council? Who have said, "Stop. Stop now. Stop in two thousand one. Stop in two thousand twelve, sixteen, and now it's two thousand twenty." What would you say to them tonight? Leah?
I would say to them that democracy is a process and one week is, I think, legitimate. And I would hope that everybody, as much as I might agree with you all on substance, I feel it is inappropriate for us to, with three new, with three voters on this board who haven't even possibly gotten through all the emails yet. They don't even know the procedure. I don't know if they've got, gotten to go through the training yet, but everything is just so upside down right now. I would say that I'm not disagreeing with them substantively. I'm just, I'm simply asking for a procedure so that we can find a legitimacy in our course. That's what I would say to them.
Uh, Brooke, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I, so a, a couple of thoughts here. Um, first of all, I wanna put on the table that whether you're, you're a new member or a seasoned member, this is a difficult conversation. It, it just really is. This has come up before in my time since I've been here, um, and it has not made its way to the floor precisely as what, as Kathy had, had alluded to. So this is not a new topic for sure. Uh, just a couple of quick thoughts. Um, Brett, to your point, and this has come up with a couple, a couple of you, and this is, this, I understand the emotional piece of this, but part of my job is to balance between the man, the, the emotional piece and the managerial piece. There, there are dollars attached to this. So w- we do wanna put that out there. We're not gonna, you know, in the spirit of transparency, there's no way that you are gonna be able to flip a switch here overnight, which is why I think, as Elaine had expressed, that there would have to be a process here, that even if you made the decision tonight. Pat and I have spoken about this, you know, w- we would almost say we need a longer process than six months just for the fiscal component of this, you know, for the, uh, whether it's the signage, whether it's the uniforms. You think about the number of kids that are involved in just athletics alone, never mind everything else that's got the brand on it. Um, so, so that is something that you're gonna wanna just be realistic about. And so, I mean, I'm taking all the emotion out of the discussion by bringing that forward, but it's a reality, right? And so you're gonna wanna think about that. Um, I also wanna say too, um, just a couple of, of other quick thoughts. I think that the, the, it, the emails that we've received were so incredibly well-written. They really were, but it was clearly well-organized. And, and so we wanna put that out there too, that we accept that. I mean, certainly, you know, we're all in the business enough to know that we can see cut and paste and we can, we can see when that happens. Um, but I would tell you that it was rewarding to me to read such detailed, articulate, well-thought-through emails from our alumni. And I remember saying, and because I, I, like Kathy, responded to every single email that, that came in. And I remember it's particularly in the alumni, thinking how proud I was of how thoughtful and, and, and the deep thought that was behind what they were putting in, into their emails. And, uh, you know, Richard mentioned that he hadn't had a chance yet to read them. I, I really encourage that, that you, that everybody takes the time to read all of them because they all bring value. I do wanna give this chair and this committee, though, even our new ones that are, are on here. I feel badly for our new people because I bet you just feel like you've been thrown into this, this incredible discussion, this incredible topic. But it takes courage to have this kind of discussion. And I'm, I'm proud of the discussion and the depth of the discussion that's happening right now. And I think a strength in leadership and a strength for this committee has always been that they're not afraid to have the tough discussions. They're not afraid to agree to disagree. And that's what I'm hearing tonight too. I'm hearing that agree to disagree. One of the things that I said in, in the number of the emails that I sent back to folks is the notion of we wanna make sure that we keep this as a civil, respectful discourse. Because again, we are the leaders. We, you know, I wanted to, to, Sharon, you weren't really asking this question, but I just wanna put this, uh, put this out there because Kathy kind of alluded to it. When you look at the three key things that a school committee member does, and you'll see this when you take your charting to course, um, course, policy, and this really falls under that policy. I think it's also, and this, this came up in a couple of emails. I think that this is also an opportunity for the school committee to take a look and review. What are those things that we hold tight to us? What are those characteristics that, that we want our, our kids to have when they leave? And what I loved in reading, especially, uh, people that have been out for twenty and thirty years, or, or even fifteen, and you feel those values come back in and you know that Nishoba has done a great job. And, and that was the other thing I'm gonna say. There was no negativity in these emails towards the district or the school or any very, very civil, respectful emails that came in. And, and they have positive memories. And, and they talked about the teachers that, that have the love and the passion for teaching and how much they learned and how they felt incredibly prepared when they left Nishoba for college. Were, this district for so many years has done an amazing job. I know that tonight is difficult. I, I know that. But I am so respectful. I just wanna put that on the table, that you chose to take up this topic. I wanna stress again to make sure that we balance, that we, that our own emotions don't, don't get in, in the way here. Because even, you know, when we were talking, uh, when we had, came, came together with a resolution Because even, you know, when we were talking, uh, when we had, came, came together with a resolution about social injustice, even for me, and I remember seeing some of the emotions that I felt going through that. I felt the same thing when we were reading. Kathy, you'd alluded to this, and I'm sure that you all felt different emotions as you were reading through these hundred plus emails. For Steve and I, I think it's almost just under two hundred emails that we've received. You know, so there's, there's a lot of voice out there. And and so I say to everybody who sent us emails, thank you for taking the time. There were very few, there were short emails. Most of them were long, thoughtful emails. And I'm very respectful of the fact that so many people thought to send us such well crafted, thoughtful emails. I I know that you're in a tough place though now and and you're going to want to move along because we've got our lawyers, by the way, sitting there waiting to to go into executive session. And we're still on the topic number one. So Kathy, I turn it back to you.
Thank you. I just want to make the point that we can make the vote to retire the chieftain and still wear the same uniforms. I think just symbolically to make the, to 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 set the intention. Nobody expects, I mean, it's like Elaine said, there's a process. Um, we are fortunate that this is a fairly affluent district and people love to help. We, there are any problems associated with with uniforms or signage, we can deal with with the community. I am heartsick that we would ask the Nipmunk to wait a minute longer. That is me. And so if I, if there are any more comments, I'll entertain the next comments. And then we, if there are no more comments, we will vote on the motion on the table. Elaine?
I was just going to say that um the NCAA banned Native American mascots fifteen years ago. There are five exceptions and all of them have formal legal uh documents with the corresponding tribes. Fifteen years ago, the NCAA that has is, involves a lot more money, longer standing traditions, and even more rabid fanbases than the Neshoba alumni. If they can figure it out, like, we can get through this too. I am confident we can get through this. I'm just not sure I can look students of color, indigenous students in the eye and say, wait a little bit longer.
Any more comments? Steve?
This is not, okay, this is not the time to kick the bucket down the road. We can make the process once we make the decision. We can say, well, over the next year, we'll slowly but surely change the signage, change the the name of the uh school magazine, do this, do that and everything else. But I I I am, I think we really need to make the decision tonight to retire the chieftains.
Thank you. Amy?
Yeah, I'd like to read from one of the very thoughtful emails that was received. That was sent to school committee members. Um, being new to the school committee, I don't know if if, is every email a public document?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Uh.
I would just not read the name of the sender.
Yeah, unless you don't, if you don't have permission, thank you, Leah. Um.
That was my question.
I just, it just read the whatever text.
Yeah, okay, this this person said, um, she graduated from Neshoba in nineteen ninety-three. Uh, and to read an excerpt, she said, many years ago, I learned from an indigenous person that mascots depicting Native Americans were harmful and racist. I only needed to be told one time to believe it. Since then, every time I drive by the high school, I feel ashamed that the chieftain mascot has not been changed. I also feel incredulous. How can a community filled with resources and committed to providing excellent education continue to use an image and a tradition that causes harm? Um, if we really want to go back to, you know, the thoughtful emails that we've received, I I, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Um, can I call the vote? We have the motion on the table. Joe, did you amend the motion to with any date?
I I did not. I just said, said that first meeting in in September.
Okay. And Leah, you wanted to amend the motion to when?
I would just um want to amend the motion to make it flexible as to when that follow up meeting could happen, to be as soon as two weeks from now, a week from now.
And then you were comfortable with that change, Leah? It's a, I think, is it called a friendly amendment, Joe?
Yes, yes, the friendly amendment, and I I.
That I do know.
Friendly amendment, yes.
Okay, and then we had a second, who made the second of the, who seconded? Okay, Leah, thank you. Okay, um, all those in favor of tabling the discussion about retiring the chieftain mascot? All those in favor, raise your hand, please. Oh, no.
No.
I'm sorry, put your hands down. Voice vote, okay, let's see, let's see, na na na, Rich?
Hi, I support the motion.
Oh, you support the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Brett?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sharon?
I do not.
Mary?
No.
Leah?
Yes.
Um, Elaine?
No.
Steve?
Oh.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy?
No.
Kathy, no. What's the count, Leah? Uh, Alita?
Hold on a sec.
Six, five, against.
Yeah, six, five.
And did the motion pass or fail?
The motion failed.
Okay. So there is um another motion. Elaine? Would you make?
I move that the Neshoba Regional School Committee vote to retire the chieftain's name and any related symbols and iconography used by the Neshoba Regional High School and Neshoba Regional School District, which would be effective. Do you want me to put this date in here? Or do I have to date?
No, put the date in, yep.
Okay, effective January first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, second. Mary seconds, um, then discussion. Mike?
I think um, um, at this point, um, now that the motion to move um, has failed and we are obligated to vote for me, um, now it's a no brainer. For me, I mean, I I, all I had to do was read one email that said um that um the Nipmunk Tribal Council uh was uh unsupportive and and um strongly requested that the mascot be changed. So now that the motion, uh, the previous motion has failed and I can, uh, and I'm obligated to vote, I mean, I certainly could abstain, but I'm not going to abstain. I'm absolutely going to vote in favor of this.
Thank you. Other comments? Leah?
Can you just review the pro, like, the rules of abstaining, et cetera? It's like a point of order.
I don't know the rules. Steve, do you know the rules of abstaining?
You just, you just abstained, and you're you're either yes or no. And you're nee, you're nee, you're neither a yes or no, that.
But what does it count towards? Does it count towards the yay or the nays?
No, it doesn't count toward any, any.
Okay.
It's 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 as if she wasn't here.
Okay.
But you still need, but you would still need six.
It, no, we just need a simple majority.
We would still need six, yes. Because there's eleven, eleven of us.
Yes.
You would be ten.
Form and our majority and our two thirds are all the same, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, there are yays, nays, and abstentions.
Yes.
To abstain, right? Lita is, you you're listed as an abstention, so.
Correct.
Not an a or an a, you know, yes or no.
Yeah, we would still need six to approve.
Okay. Other comments? Joseph?
No, I just wanted to clarify, Steve, Steve said something funny. It's when he says to, uh, regards to Leah's question, as if she was not here. To the contrary, uh, an abstention is very much there. Uh, to answer, I think, Leah's question, your your abstention really serves towards the the number of of, towards quorum. But we don't have that quorum issued and that, we have full of live members. But I do agree with the chair that, uh, with abstention, it would just be a simple majority at this point, so.
Thank you, Joseph. Other, uh, Leah?
Um, so I just wanted to say that all of you guys have already made your substantive comments and I have not really. So I do want to, one more time, go on the record and say that I'm uncomfortable making the vote tonight. Um, even though I know that this is longstanding, right? Like, I've been a humanities teacher for twenty years. I got this all in my hip pocket. This, these are things that my students have been debating legitimately in my classroom forever. So I have opinions on it. Um, I have fortunately been paying attention and listening to constituents. And I know that um the majority of people who have reached out to us um by far are in favor of changing the mascot. So I just want to say that in commitment to our resolution toward anti racism, I take that seriously. I do see this as a race based issue. The one thing that I do hear from those who are against removing the mascot is that they believe the chieftain can be um, is extricable from Native America. So I just want to say that I do not believe that that is possible, similar to what Steve said earlier. I think that our chieftain is Native American and there's really no changing that. Um, I think that my, the biggest thing that I'm facing in my um thoughts is that the United States Commission on Civil Rights has identified this as a, as a possible violation of civil rights and toggled to discrimination. And we have Native American students, perhaps not at this moment, but um in our lower schools and in our neighborhoods. And so I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about all the psychological studies. There are dozens of them that say that this sort of thing causes harm. Um, I also know from my research um that this is not something that uh, we can take lightly, that we need to take a stand against things like this. But I also know that we have a lot of neighbors and a lot of students who are not going to um take to this easily. Um, I know that Steve Colonnain said that this is being taught in the schools and I am happy to hear that. Um, I just hope that, you know, we can look to our humanities curriculum to double back and make sure that it is being systemically covered. Uh, because I think that education in um the wake of this vote is going to become incredibly important. And uh, so that everybody can truly understand why the vote that we're about to take is long coming and necessary.
Thank you, Leah. Other comments? Mary?
I'm wondering in the terms of the timeline, whether we want to specify January first. Are we, with everything that Superintendent Clancy said? Um, do we want, that's, that's my only thought right now. Um, of course, I'm trying to be sensitive. I I do want to go forward with this, but I'm just wondering if we, you know, if the, if the period could be during the school year, that the, there is a transition. I'm wondering what people think, so that would be amendment. Um, if if six months isn't enough, um, that was what Brooke said, and she talked to Pat about. Should we, you know, could we amend this?
We could always change it later.
Well, that's the thing, we can be flexible with it. And and again, we're not going to have different uniforms. They're still going to say chieftains. But I I think the the vote to retire the chieftain and the iconography in my mind is the most important gesture in this part of time, town, uh, i- i- in this point in time. Uh, I think everything else is manageable. If we need more time, I mean, that's understandable. Um, if we need to look for how we're going to fund these, that's understandable. And I think we can work with that. But I think that as a committee, to be true to our core values and our resolution regarding equity and acceptance in active anti racism, that we need to vote on this tonight. Other?
I move the vote.
Questions? Uh, the vote has been called. Um, are we ready to vote? Okay, I'm going to call the roll. Rich? Oh, wait, so the, it is all those in favor of retiring the chieftain um, as the uh, the the mascot? And then engaging in a process to um rebrand the 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 team names, et cetera. Um, and with flexible, with the target of January first, twenty twenty-one, but with the understanding that that might be flexible. Um, so that's what we're voting on, to retire the chieftain. Rich?
Hi.
Brett?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mike? Sharon? Um, I'm sorry, Amy?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. I know this wasn't easy and I know I didn't make it easy because I get a little Italian and sorry. But I I think that this is important. And I I I think that the message it sends to our community and that the the members of the Nipmunk Tribal um Nation is so important. We can work out everything else, but this is an important first step. And we're leading the way. Because other districts are already calling Brooke to see what we're doing and how we're doing it. So we lead in a- academics and athletics and music and caring and giving. Another leadership role for us, so thank you. And if if in my emotional order, I offended anybody or made them feel uncomfortable, clearly not my intent, and I and I apologize um, that 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 was the way I made you feel. Um, but I am, I really am proud of this group. It's, we always have a tough issue to tackle and and I think this is the right decision moving forward. So thank you. Mary?
Do we have a motion about moving forward in terms of some kind of a representative?
Maybe? I think there's another motion. Elaine?
Yeah, I apologize, I got caught up in the moment there. Um, I I would move that a new team name and related symbols and iconography for the Neshoba Regional High School's athletic teams and the school more broadly be developed by a representative Neshoba Regional High School Committee established by Superintendent Brooke Clancy during a transition period beginning July first, twenty twenty, and continuing through December thirty first, twenty twenty.
Can I get a second? Uh, Mary second? Discussion? Um, Leah? Leah?
Um, so I'm not totally sure if we should broach this right now, but I just wonder, Brooke, what is? I mean, this is a school committee decision, I guess, but how does, how does the faculty feel? How does the union feel? How does administration feel? Is that an appropriate question?
You know, I I I, I'm going to say, I don't think that that's, I don't think I could give you a good answer right now. In talking sporadically, I mean, it wasn't something that we, we took a straw poll vote or anything like that. But have I been talking to people? Yes, of course I have. And and I think that, I think overarching me, you have people that that feel adamantly that what, the decision that you made tonight was the right decision. You're going, you're going to have a lot of people that feel that. You also have the other side that said that for all the same reasons we've talked about tonight, this, this was the legacy, this is what they clung to. But I would, I would say to you that when I have talked to people in the last week to two weeks, what I'm hearing i- is, I'm not surprised by this. We'll get behind whatever the next decision is and we'll work together. And so, to be honest with you, that's what I'm hearing. Now, maybe I, maybe I'm not hearing a, from a ton of people, but I'm hearing from some, some key leaders. And and I'm proud, I'm proud of that approach as well.
Other uh questions or comments? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, Amy?
Well, I was just, I'd like to make sure that this decision, getting back to um, part of the earlier discussion, I'd like to make sure that this is communicated in a way that um, explains the decision in the, in the context of the NRC, the the school committee's responsibility for racial justice. I'd like to make sure that it references that and and how this supports our core values.
Yes. I think we can make sure that that happens, Amy. I think that that's critical. I think we can make sure that that happens, Amy. I think that that's critical. Uh, and thank you for, for bringing that up because I think the context is very important.
A- and I would just want to add that, um, I would like to put together a resource, um, binder, if you will, uh, virtual and um, uh, tangible with the most pertinent documents um, that, that have come forward to include the um, the, the direct communication from the Nipmuck Tribe, because this information was out there. Um, but we didn't have it. And I think it's important that we have the documentation um, in case somebody wants to go back and revisit this. And so that's something that I am happy to work on and compile and then bring it forward to the committee. The other thing is that there is obviously the recording of this and there will be some documents that were referenced that will become part of the meeting materials, but that'll be posted on the website. Uh, yes, Elaine?
Um, I just wanted to say it doesn't need to be in the motion or anything, but um, I would encourage for this next phase to cast a very wide net with whatever this committee looks like. I think, I think it's a great idea to have it be driven by the students at the high school specifically. But still try to bring in all of these different constituencies um, to be a part of, of a, of, of an actual dialogue about everything that we've said before. What are the values? What do we want to epitomize? And then what is that, what does that look like in terms of a logo and a, and a symbol?
Thank you. Mary?
I want to add on to that. Um, definitely the students, um, having been a high school principal and taught most of my years in high school, I have to say that high school faculty is so imperative. They really carry in so many ways, carry the culture, carry the traditions. And, and so I know that Elaine would mean for them too, you know, so the students and faculty and then other representatives too. Um, to begin this process as, as.
Thank you. Brooke?
You know, one, one of the, the emails, I'm not sure if it went to all of you or not, came from a student that talked about opportunities fresh out. This, this was a, a alumni. Talked about fresh opportunities for us and said, I think, I think it was alumni. It was a student on the lesson and said, is this a really, is this an appropriate time right now when we're looking at the potential for new building, new starts? Should this also be a new start for us? Is this a time for a re- a rebranding? Keeping all the really good things that make Nishoba so special, but maybe just a time to rebrand a new opportunity. And I thought that that was really, uh, that wa- that was a really good classic email that we received.
Thank you. If there are no more comments, I would like to call the vote. Okay, um, Steve, are you there? We'll come back to Steve. Uh, Rich? Well, r- read the motion again.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was gonna request too.
Yeah, please read the vote again.
Uh, I moved that a new team name and related symbols and iconography for the Nishoba Regional High School's athletic teams and the school more broadly be developed by a representative Nishoba Regional High School Committee established by Superintendent Brooke Clunche during a transition period, beginning July first, twenty twenty, and continuing through December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Um, okay, uh, Rich?
Aye.
Brett?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Um, Mary?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Elaine? Mike? Amy? Amy?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes. Unanimous. Thank you. And again, thank you. Thank you. And thank you. Okay. So here we go. Let's see, where are we in the agenda?
Topic number one.
Oh, oh. All right, we gotta go back to the May Treasury Report. Pat, you've got that?
Let me just, my screen, hold on. Yes, I, um, this is the Treasures Report for May thirty-first, twenty twenty. Um, I don't know if anybody has any questions. You see this every month. Um, it's something that our treasure brings forward.
Every, tried to download it and told me that it was not available.
I kno- I know. Um, I, I noticed that too, Steve, and um, Alita fixed it.
When?
Um.
I tried this, and it was, so it was not working.
Are you able to put it up on the screen?
No, that's all right. I'll, I'll, she can email it to me, okay? Uh, cuz I, I, there, there, I would like to have some of that information.
It's in the packet now.
As of when? Because it wasn't there this afternoon.
It was there. The link was broken sometime today.
Oh, okay.
It's re- it's re- it's refixed now.
Thank you.
Any quest- can everybody see it? Or did you, we, did you want Pat to put it up?
That's all right.
Okay. Any questions for Pat? Seeing none. Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome.
And our next item is then on the district reopening.
So I'm just thinking, I, 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 I want to be um, just re- refreshing memory that our lawyers are waiting for us to go into executive session. So you know, Todd said to me, he texted and said, should we, should we ask to postpone this or can we just go through really quickly? Um, so I'm, I'm suggesting that we go through this really quick.
I would agree, uh, cuz I think we, we need to know what's, I know, I know it's a moving target.
Yeah. So Todd, do you, can you share that with us? And, and let's start with the chart and then we'll just kind of go through that and just do a quick.
I do, I do just want to acknowledge that, you know, going into business as usual after such a, you know, a tough conversation um, isn't easy to do. So, you know, I know you don't hear the opinions necessarily from Brooke and I, but I certainly um, respect the number of emails that I read over the last uh, couple of weeks um, from those concerned about our mascot and also just acknowledging what is going on politically in the country right now as it relates to race. As it relates to the Supreme Court decision that came out that last week for LGBTQ members in terms of work protections as well as um, issues related to the Nipmuck Tribe in our, in our own mascot. So uh, I just want to acknowledge, not easy to go to uh, something like this after such a really, really important conversation. So thank you for having it. We've been working um, pretty diligently since um, school ended on the seventeenth with kids. Um, to start looking at our fall reopening structure, we've gotten some guidance from the Department of Education um, in terms of what that will look like. And they've asked us to um, prepare three plans for moving back into the fall uh, to consist of full return to school with safety precautions. Um, a hybrid model that would include back to school as well as um, remote learning. And then what might a full remote learning model look like if we were to have to go back into that? Um, with that, uh, we mentioned in our last meeting that we would be creating a uh, district-wide task force that would have multiple layers. In the last meeting, we showed you our flow chart in terms of what that would look like. Um, as well as the focus areas in terms of moving us back into um, a fall reopening plan. So we've created um, a model for you and I'm gonna share that screen with you right now to show you where we're at. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Great.
So do you want to just walk through this? Todd, do you want me to walk through it?
I'm happy to walk through it.
Sure.
So with our fall reopening planning structure, um, what we did was we identified um, three goals. Uh, and we're obviously charged with creating a master plan for the reopening of all schools across the district. Really focused on ensuring the safety, the health, and the security of all of our students and staff um, in the middle of a national and global pandemic. We're following CDC guidelines, health guidelines, and the specific guidance from the state and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The second goal is to coordinate collaborative task forces that include multiple stakeholders across all three of our Nishoba communities. And finally, we want to implement learning plans that allow for in-class return to school, remote, as well as a hybrid learning model that follow the guidance from our state, our Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, as well as the CDC. With that, we've worked to create um, a district steering committee that will consist of central office administrators to include the superintendent, myself, members from the teaching and learning team, our business office, our human resources office, health and wellness, our nutritional services, pupil personnel, technology, extended learning, as well as representation from union and school committee to provide the vision and the resources for our return to school in the fall in creating three plans that will include the full physical return to schools, classrooms with identified precautions from the CDC and the state. A hybrid model to include both in-class instruction and remote learning as well as a full remote learning model should we need to revert back to that as we've been in since the middle of March, twenty twenty. This committee will communicate specifically with towns, all of our task forces, and review the guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the CDC, and the state. With that, we've identified four specific focus areas that we need to really hone in on um, as it relates to our busing, our facilities and our operation. Next is our teaching and learning department, highly focused on social emotional learning as well as social justice, curriculum, instruction, and assessment. We're also looking at our extended learning programs in childcare. And finally, health, safety, and human resources. And you'll see the specific topics under each of those areas that we're focused on. So with those focus areas, we've created teams. And you'll see the names of people in our central office mostly who will help lead those focus area teams from our district steering committee to then work with our building-based task forces and be the go-tos as it relates to those four focus areas. So you'll see individuals such as Pat, Rob Free- Freezwick, Director of Facilities, Su Chi, in that busing facilities operations category. People in my team for teaching and learning, Martina Kenyon, who you know well as our Director of Curriculum for the District. Um, Raina Rago and our extended learning, Tom Hool for Nutritional Services, and then Lisa Gilbicki and Marie Stoica around health wellness, and then Anne Marie under Human Resources. So those will be our point people, our, our focus areas. And then from there, we're building our school building task forces which will consist of our building administrators, our principals and assistant principals, teachers, union and school committee representation, as well as our school council members who identify needs for all three of these models that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is asking for us to create. We will have to create these three models and also present these three models and turn them in to the department um, by summer's end. So the charge for these building task forces will be to specifically highlight and address the building needs as they relate to teaching, learning, instruction, space, resources to ensure the robust learning opportunities for all of our students. Currently, we're in the beginning stages where all of our buildings have gone into, all of our building leaders with Director of Facilities have gone into building, start measuring rooms, looking at spaces because we have been tasked by the Department of Education to create a phys- create and conduct a feasibility study to determine whether full return to classrooms based on guidelines is possible. So that's the stage that we are in now. After the Fourth of July holiday, next week, our building-based teams, as well as our focus area teams will begin the process of creating our full fall reopening plan. And so you'll see those building-based teams here at each of our schools will be led by each of the principals, assistant principals, and at the high school, our um, athletic director, as well as student representation. And we're also looking into student representation at our middle school level as well. So that's just an overview um, of where we are moving now that we've got some guidance, but we still wait for more specific guidance from the Department of Ed as it relates to what the fall reopening will look like.
Thanks, Todd. Can, um, can you take that off now so that we can just have the gallery view game for the Zoom? Thanks. So a couple of quick things too that I want to point out, Rob, uh, Dr. McGuire was talking about the fact that um, our buildings have now all been measured. So we, we know where our, our problem, our problem child is in terms of a building, and that's not gonna surprise you. We are gonna be able to get everybody safely um, with the, the distances. By the way, it's three foot edge to edge in chairs. So the, um, was it yesterday, Todd? I believe that they gave the diagrams to us and said, this is what it should look like. Um, so we're, we're fine at all of our middle and elementary schools. It's our high school, right? That's going to uh, right now create some issues for us in space. So we're not prepared to speak to that right now because we've got a lot of different ideas that we're, we've got uh, circulating right now. Nothing tangible to bring forward, but just the wo- the layouts of the rooms, um, we, we, we just can't do do it like the, the state is asking us to do it. So we're gonna have to be a little bit more creative. We are looking into things, for example, do we bring in some um, um, modulators? Do we, what does this look like? So we've got a lot of things that we need to think about yet for the high school. But our elementary and middle are fine. Um, a little tight, a little tight, but, but fine. It's all workable. One of the other things, so I think I had mentioned before, is that we are looking at going district-wide to a five-day cycle, which is very different for us. And so, you know, this, again, we either look at this and say, oh my gosh, we can't believe we're having to do this, or we look and say, well, this is an opportunity for us to look at things a little bit differently, and we're choosing to go down the opportunity road. So our elementary and middle uh, school of principals have been meeting uh, with us as well as offline. They're working very, very hard to calibrate. So as what they're looking at these schedules, they've been creating some templates and, and working through different scenarios with them and working to make sure that they're calibrated across the district. So that's, that's another really big focus for us is to make sure that what's happening in, in Lancaster is what's happening in Stowe in terms of scheduling and such. Um, we've had some really good and rich discussion with Steve Colleen about the high school and putting the high school in a five-day cycle. And um, that's gonna be, that's gonna be very, very different because again, they are used to running on an eight-day cycle with a drop-two type uh, plan. And so this is gonna be very unique. Uh, in part, one of the reasons why we're being encouraged to look at the five-day cycle i- is because there's every opportunity or chance pensions that we may end up finding ourselves in a hybrid ball at some point in time throughout the school year. So this is really to be proactive. It makes sure that we are ready to do that if we need to. Which is why the, the DESE is asking for the three plans. It's really, at first it was three completely separate plans, and as of, I think, yesterday, it was one plan with showing the three different models. So that's something else that we're working on right now. The, we are now starting to get into the nitty-gritty of what this looks like. So I think that we feel comfortable enough to start to bring these various groups on board. Um, a- and start to look at what does this look like at the school level? What does it look like, for example, to get kids off the bus in the morning and what does dismissal look like? And each building is gonna look a little bit differently. You know, again, there'll be a level of consistency, but each building has different areas in, in terms of how this works. You know, as Kyle Brady said yesterday or the day before, said, I'm ready to lay out all of the arrows showing, just like the supermarkets. This is where you go, this is how you walk. And so I think honestly, you're going to start to see that, just like you see in the super, the supermarkets, you're gonna start to see that in our buildings as well. Um, we're, there are still some things that we're unsure of. Um, we were told that, that we would be receiving more guidance from the state in um, mid to late July, and we would expect more guidance in mid-August. So that's, for us, that's just unbelievably late for us to try to implement things. And so I'm not being critical, I'm just saying it's from a level of source of frustration for us as we try to work through this. So we're just kind of pushing ahead and doing what we believe is gonna be right for our kids and right for our students. Our, our staff as well. We have been in touch with our union, obviously, and, and talking to them about the fact that we're looking at doing this and why we're doing it. Uh, they want to be problem solvers with us and we want that. So I'm very grateful for uh, the relationship that we have with our unions. Um, there are some other things that we, we need some very specific guidance on, and we have pushed the commissioner on this. For example, band, coral, gym, athletics are all big areas. For example, in the, some of the discussion we've had at the state level with regards to instruments, brass instruments keeps coming up. And I understand that because I, I understand that brass instruments harbor, you know, a certain amount of um, saliva in them. But the truth is, so. But the truth is soda clarinet, soda fluids, these toxic ones, if you think about it. So I, I'm not sure, you know, where they're going to land on that, but we can expect to receive guidance on that. We have talked about different things again, as we're trying to be creative. Do we look at uh? Tent structures, do we look, what does this look like? We're talking about our meals, our breakfast and lunches. Um, not all schools have the breakfast programs, but some, some do. And we want to make sure that our children that are receiving breakfast. Continue to receive breakfast. So we're looking at different options for that. The same thing can be said for extended learning. If you think about our extended learning programs, for the most part, the, the um. Ratios are pretty much exactly what we would be looking for, that ten to one for the kindergartens. Uh, twelve to, or pre-camping is pre-k kindergarten, uh twelve to one for the others. So we are looking. Part of our issue with our extended day though is real estate. And so, you know, where, where is that house? What is it going to look like? So there's a whole other layer that we have to look at for our extended day program. Um, but again, I feel that we've got great problem solvers as an administrative team. Uh, you know, I know when the, after the principals met this morning, elementary and middle school, they called me and said they were so excited because. They'd accomplished so much this morning with their meetings and through, through the calibration meeting that they felt really, really good about where they'd landed. So I feel that we've got the right team in place. It's just so many layers to look at right now. And so we're, we're pushing ahead. Um, a- and then if we have to uh pivot as a, you know, the commissioner has said, because. We are right now planning for a full return with precautions. But having said that, we also realize that we may have to pivot a week or two weeks before that even starts. So we're, we're trying to plan for everything.
So I also worked extensively on a um remote learning survey, as we mentioned in our last meeting.
Thank you.
Um, I worked pretty extensively with another assistant superintendent's group. Um, so we're trying to calibrate remote learning surveys across the Commonwealth based on the guidance from uh the Department of Education. So. You'll find that that survey went out this evening to all of our families. Um, and it's a seventeen question survey that asks for feedback based on um what they experienced um this spring with our remote learning. Um, so uh, our remote learning program as well as asks them to really engage with their children in terms of getting their feedback. Uh, there's an open answer question at the end to provide some specific feedback. And we've also asked, you know, based on the guidance that says, you know, we, we might be going back full into the classrooms. You know, do you plan on sending your child back in the fall, given this guidance, given that we're still in the middle of a pandemic? So. Um, that survey is open for one week. And so our teaching and learning, my teaching and learning crew has um. A scheduled meeting next week so that we can take a look at that data um to inform uh the work that we're gonna uh complete moving forward.
So in a nutshell, that's as quick as we could make it.
Okay, so I want to allow folks an opportunity to ask questions. Leah first and then Mike. Go ahead Leah.
Oh, just really quick, I, did I miss it Todd? Did you say how parents or community members are a part of the task force?
I did. So uh, our school counts at our uh, at our um school levels, our school council members and parents on school council. Will be uh contacted by building principals and then anyone else who had reached out in terms of expressing an interest. Uh, those principal, you know, we advise them to contact their building principal to be a part of that. As well as on the district steering committee, that will include union representation as well as representation from uh your group for those who might be interested. So yes.
Thank you. Um, Mike.
Yeah, so um, this is for Todd and for Brooke. You know, in going back to this full return, even though it's a full return, it's going to look very, very different for, for everybody, for parents, for students, for teachers. Um, I'm wondering if you can detail um. If and what type of professional development we are planning on offering our teachers. Before they come back in whatever, early September.
Todd, Mike, it's a great question. And thank you for asking it. Um, the teaching and learning department did put out a survey prior to the end of school. To teachers and asked those specific questions in terms of what are your needs? Should we be in a remote learning model? Should we be in a hybrid model? Or even full return to classroom based upon these new guidelines? So we have that data. We just finished up our summer academy where we offered a, a, a lot of professional development, particularly around remote learning. Digital resources, those kinds of things. Um, you know, and Brooke and I finished a meeting this morning where we talked about. Um, what the first few days, because we always have a couple of days where teachers just come in at the beginning. And what those days might look like and whether we could even possibly increase those days for professional development. Once we know specifically what our plan is and we can certainly um. Tailor those days to what the needs are for preparing our teachers in this new model. So it's a great question and we've been talking about it extensively and, you know, thanks to my team like Martina. And those on my team, they're, they're just fantastic at, at creating those opportunities for teachers.
I think too, Mike, I know that you and I had talked at one point in time about the fact that um. You know, I would love to have um more front loaded time for our teachers this year. That is not off the table. And we are still looking into that. Um, we are waiting a little bit on that because we are waiting to see if the commissioner, we've asked the commissioner about this. We're waiting to see if he will consider changing the number of days. And that would definitely impact us. And so um. Rather than changing our timetable, we're looking to see if our own schedule, our own, you know, our, your calendar. If there might be something that still comes down the next two weeks from the DESE. And so I think we're just going to, you're going to see us hang tight. For about the next two weeks on that, but know that that's at the forefront of our thinking right now. There's also, it is, and we would point out that there's also training that needs to happen. Um, in, in light of this, and so we need to, so our, our first couple of days back are going to be um very different.
Other questions for Brooke? Elaine?
Um, I actually wanted to ask you about E S Y. I know that's supposed to start really soon. Um, and I had gotten some questions recently that people. Still didn't really know what um the plan was for their specific student, like uh in terms of safety procedures. Um, and what kind of services would be available? And so I was wondering if that, if that has worked out or if that is still in process.
I'm not sure that Todd and I would be the best to answer that because that's, that, that's really Joan De Angelis and Steve Grant. I know that they're working on, I do know though that um, and, and I'm not sure where it's at, so I don't want to speak. I, I don't feel comfortable in responding to your, your question exactly, but we can certainly find out and. And make sure that the school committee has fed the right answer. But I do know that there were concerns that we were not. Um, potentially going to be able to get the P P E that we needed to run the program. And particular the gowns, uh, we, we were having problems getting the gowns and we knew that we could not start. Um, an onsite program with students onsite without all of that equipment. And I know that Rob has, I mean, he's done yeoman's work and he and Lisa were still trying. You know, as recently as a couple of days ago, try to get all the P P E so that they could start that. But they will not be able to start it without the P P E in place.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure that's difficult. Um, I think that um, I cannot understate how complicated this all is. You, you know that. And I think the general public totally understands this. Um, I also think they're waiting on a plan announced from the district. To, in order to make their own decisions. And I think you'll see.
I know.
Tuffling after a plan is announced. So like, as much as you possibly can get out there in advance. I think that will be really important. And in order to, to help you. Not have a chaotic first week or first two weeks when people are changing their minds and moving and saying, oh, never mind, I couldn't find childcare. I need to move to this and I need to change that. Like we want, we want to avoid that. So I, I was hoping we can do all of that during the month of August. Um, and then, you know, if the course of the pandemic changes or if laws and guidelines change, then we'll deal with it. But hopefully we can sort that out sooner rather than later.
You, you know, I think too, it was frustrating for us and I know, and again, I'm not being critical because I think the DESE is just trying to find their way through this, just like we are. But I think to our communities and I think back to when we wanted to change the half days on the school calendar. And do you remember that? And, and it's like, we need at least a year's notice in advance for like, I think it was two half days, Anne Marie or three half days. And, and I'm thinking here we are and we're still not going to get guidance until basically. A week before school starts on certain components of this. And. It, it, it's not only is it not fair to our families, it's not fair to us as a district. And yet there's, it's not like you can point a finger and blame someone. It's no one's fault. It's just where we're landing and. Even laying up with all of this work that we're doing right now, we still may have to, depending on the numbers. We still may have to pivot a week before we start. Not as, so right now we're planning for full return. That's what we're planning for. That's what we want. That's what we hope for. But honestly, as I sit here tonight, that's just what our plans are. We, we just, we know that we still may have to pivot at the end. We may have to pivot to the hybrid model. We, we may have to pivot back to remote learning. It depends on our numbers. So. There's a lot up in the air, I know.
Um, what's the term they use Brooke? You have to be comfortable with ambiguity.
Ambiguity, get comfortable with ambiguity was our commissioner's, yeah, uh, statement to us, yeah.
Inspires a lot of confidence. Um, other questions for Brooke or Todd about the reopening? This Brooke, you've done an incredible job of keeping all of us up to date. And as well as the, the community, the school community. And I know, I, we thought revving up to, to, to remote learning was a challenge. Uh, this is such a moving target. And um, you guys, I, I agree, you have an incredible team. Dr. McGuire, um, I don't know how you do it. You just, and you're so cool. Um, we appreciate it.
We're not always. We have our moments, don't we?
We have our moments.
The, the leadership and the, and there's leadership and then there's follow, followership. And the fact that we're not hearing rumblings from the seven, everybody's working incredibly hard and, and hopefully. Um, our teachers are able to, to, to um recharge their batteries this summer, but you folks have to do it as well. So continue to keep us informed and um fingers crossed about full return. Hadn't even thought about brass instruments and germs. I mean, it's always something. So. Other.
Thank you.
Uh, can we move on? Seeing no objections or questions? So real quick, I have some really quick updates. Um, I need to know about, and, and you can email me, we don't have to talk about it. Graduation is Saturday, uh, July twenty fifth at nine AM at the high school with a rain date of Sunday. What?
Can I speak to that for a minute? One of the questions that was asked of the commissioner, um, yes, yesterday, I think Todd is, or Monday. Was about graduation. And if the three foot rule was in place or it still had to be six foot, he was adamant. Six foot rule is still in place for graduation.
Yep. So, so I bring it up because of the, the um, Marcia, who's in charge of this at the high school. Wants to know um who's going. I will be there as chair. Um, I cannot hand out diplomas, but um. I don't know what I'll do, but I will be there. But if you are interested in going, please just shoot me an email so. They can figure you into the mix as school committee members. We do have an opportunity to be guests at the graduation. So there's that. Um, I have reached out to the Edco Collaborative. They have a um. A program called Ideas Initiatives for Developing Equity and Achievement by Students. And it would provide us with some fresh professional development in the areas. Of promoting equity and acceptance and also looking at our policies and practices as a school committee. Um, I have not yet heard back from them. I'm, I'm, this is a busy time of year for anybody involved in professional development. But I will continue to reach out and if I have any news, I will communicate um through an email. Um, but I don't expect us to be engaging in any kind of professional development until, until the fall. Um, there is, please let me know, just, and again, shoot me an email. Your preferences with regard to subcommittees. And I'm going to propose that we bring back the communications subcommittee. Um, because I, I think personnel has other jobs and, and, and things to accomplish. So look in the um, the staff manu, the, 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 the school committee manual to look at the descriptions. And then send me your, again, shoot me an email, tell me the ones that you'd be interested in. And if there's a committee you don't want to be on, tell me that too. Um, and then finally, I would like to propose, we have a summer workshop the week of August twenty fourth. And um, it would be uh, uh, during the week. Um, and what I will do is I'll send out a Google survey. And folks, I'll put the days of the week and some times down and you can get back to me that way. Um, so I'd like to do that. Um, uh, with, with, uh, using uh technology, if that's okay with folks. The other thing you can do is think about topics you want on that agenda. And, but again, I'll send out something electronically for folks. And, okay.
Kathy?
Yes.
Hi, it's Rich Acle.
Hi, Rich.
Um, forgive my ignorance, but um, and maybe I missed it because my daughter's chasing around a cat behind me. But um, what, what are the names of the committees or?
Okay, if you, uh, remember we went through the um, the documents on the, the school committee website?
Under. Yeah.
Many documents. There is a, a school committee manual and I can, I can call, hook up with you tomorrow and walk you through it, but the man.
Yeah, that's fine. I've just been getting a lot, I'll, I'll look at it. I've just been getting a lot of email lately, so I haven't had a chance to read the orientation documents yet.
That's okay. And, and again, this is, I.
I hope you caught my eye, I hope you caught my irony in what I just said.
Yeah, I did. Anyway, um, yeah, so I think it's the description start on page fifteen of the online manual. And um, but I'll, I'll, I'll send out an email to follow up from tonight with reminders. Um, and I'll give a deadline for getting back to me.
Thank you.
That's it for me. Um, are there any questions about anything I mentioned? So I think we will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. Elaine?
Um, yes, and there, there's a reminder that Elaine is so graciously put in that the three new members should abstain from this motion because they were not present at the meeting. Um, meetings for the minutes that we're voting on. Um, I move to approve the consent agenda of July first, twenty twenty, containing the warrants of July third, twenty twenty, and the meeting minutes of June seventeenth, twenty twenty.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Steve, Steve seconded. Okay, I'll call the vote. Um, Rich, oh no, he, Rich, you have to abstain.
I abstained.
Thank you. Uh, Mike? He said yes. I can read lips. Steve?
Yes, yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Sharon?
I abstained.
Thank you. Um, Mary?
Yes.
And Leah?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Amy? Kathy? Yes. Thank you. Okay, um, we'll take care of the items for the next agenda, which will be for our, our summer workshop um, online. Um, and now we have another um motion we will be entering into executive session. So Elaine is the reader of the motions.
All right. I move to go into executive session at eight forty-eight PM pursuant to MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, eight-three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Unit A slash unit C and pursuant to MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, eight-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental, detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares. George King, the Nishoba Regional School District and Pat Morone, Civil Docket Number One, eight-six B, six-four-three A. Executive session to include Superintendent Clenchey, Assistant Superintendent Dr. McGuire, Business Manager Pat Morone, and Human Resources Director Anne Marie Stoica.
Okay, and am I correct in saying that if um, we have to come back in a public session to um. Announce the contract vote? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, okay. So um, Mary?
Second.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, all right, voice vote and Rich?
Aye.
Uh, Mike? Steve?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Um, Leah?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes. Okay, we will now move into executive session. Kathy? Yes. Okay, we will now move into executive session.